Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Township of Lacey, July tenth, two thousand and fourteen meeting. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertising the Asbury Park press in the Lacey Beacon, or in the Beacon, and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting. We're going to begin with a salute to the flag in a moment. Silence, please.
(inaudible)
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 Okay, item number one, first reading, the ordinance, two thousand and fourteen dash sixteen, amending chapter three twenty-three vehicles and traffic so as to add additional through streets.
In order to attach up Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter three twenty-three of the township code of the Township of Lacey to have vehicles and traffic so as to amend section three twenty-three dash twenty-seven titled Schedule for Through Streets. This is just clearing up some corrections in the code with regards to a through street which shall be named Clearview Street from its intersection with Old Street to its terminus at Canterbury Drive. That would mean any intersecting street at that point from those directions on Clearview would have stop signs.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Dave, was that you?
Yes, Steve.
No. Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Is that with you?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
My ears weren't open, I guess. Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number two, second reading, the ordinance, two thousand and fourteen dash fourteen, authorizing bonding for various two thousand and fourteen capital projects as approved by the adoption of municipal budget.
In order to attach up Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, providing for the various capital improvements and the acquisition of various capital equipment and appropriating one million four hundred and twenty thousand dollars therefore, and providing for the issuance of one million three hundred and twenty thousand five hundred dollars in bonds or notes of the Township of Lacey to finance the same of the cost of these projects. This is for those two thousand and fourteen capital improvement projects that were approved in the budget. Second reading?
Second reading. I'll open it to the public. If there's any public comment.
Sheen, I'm motion to close the floor.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
(inaudible)
Dave made the motion on the ordinance?
Second, honor, please.
Second.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number three, second reading, the ordinance, two thousand and fourteen dash fifteen, setting the salaries for various municipal positions.
In order to attach up Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled, in order to the Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensations of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. This is setting the salary for the position of assistant municipal tax collector at fifty-five thousand dollars annually, and municipal alliance coordinator at twenty-four dollars per hour.
Being the second reading, I will open it to the floor if there's any public comment.
Sheen, I'm motion to close the floor.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion on the ordinance?
Move.
Second. Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number four, resolution two thousand and fourteen one sixty-four, awarding a contract to Beck Engineering for HVAC rooftop unit replacement for the police department.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, awarding a contract to Beck Engineering for professional engineering consulting services for an HVAC rooftop unit replacement for the Lacey Township Police Department. This is in a contract in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number five, resolution two thousand and fourteen one sixty-five, awarding a contract to Earl Asphalt Company for the Sunrise Boulevard Road Improvement Project.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, awarding a contract to Earl Asphalt Company for the two thousand and thirteen DOT Municipal Aid Grant Project known as Sunrise Boulevard Road Improvement Project. Total amount of this grant project is four hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and thirteen cents. It is offset by a three hundred thousand dollar grant that we have received from the New Jersey Department of Transportation. This contract shall begin sometime in August and it should be run consecutively, depending on weather, for forty-five days.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number six, resolution two thousand and fourteen one sixty-six, memorializing the approvals of rules and regulations for the Gilly Park Skate Park.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, memorializing the approvals of rules of operation for the skate park facility at Gilly Park. This is authorizing as of July tenth, two thousand and fourteen, the use of scooters at the skate park in accordance with the letter that has been received from the manufacturer of the equipment.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number six, resolution two thousand and fourteen one sixty-six, memorializing the approvals of rules and regulations for the Gilly Park Skate Park.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, memorializing the approvals of rules of operation for the skate park facility at Gilly Park. This is authorizing as of July tenth, two thousand and fourteen, the use of scooters at the skate park in accordance with the letter that has been received from the manufacturer of the equipment.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number seven, resolution two thousand and fourteen one sixty-seven, authorizing amendments to the Local Government Policy and Procedures Manual.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, authorizing amendments to the Local Government Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual and the Employee Handbook for the Township of Lacey. We are in a review year with the Ocean County Joint Insurance Fund and in accordance with our employment practices liability, we need to update our policy procedures and manuals for our employees and our department heads, and this is the culmination of those changes and updates that have been reviewed and signed off by the attorney.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number eight, resolution two thousand and fourteen one sixty-eight, providing for a change of text and title in municipal budget.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, providing for a change of text or title or text of an appropriation pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash eighty-five. Municipal Alliance Grant Program has gone to a fiscal year versus a calendar year, and in order for us to differentiate that through the budgets, we needed to change around some of the wording on the line items in the budget.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number eight, resolution two thousand and fourteen one sixty-eight, providing for a change of text or title or text of an appropriation pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash eighty-five. Municipal Alliance Grant Program has gone to a fiscal year versus a calendar year, and in order for us to differentiate that through the budgets, we needed to change around some of the wording on the line items in the budget.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number nine, resolution two thousand and fourteen one sixty-nine, authorizing a special item of revenue in the two thousand and fourteen budget for the Municipal Alliance Grant Program.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the two thousand and fourteen municipal budget known as the chapter one fifty-nine of the Township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash eighty-seven. Since this money was not received prior to the adoption of the budget, we need to now pass this resolution to do so. This is for the Municipal Alliance Program. The total amount is forty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number ten, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy, authorizing a special item of revenue in the two thousand and fourteen budget for the Clean Communities Grant Program.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the two thousand and fourteen municipal budget known as chapter one fifty-nine of the Township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash eighty-seven. And again, this money was not notified or received prior to the adoption of the budget. The Clean Communities Grant Program in the amount of sixty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars and ninety-four cents.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number ten, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy, authorizing a special item of revenue in the two thousand and fourteen budget for the Clean Communities Grant Program.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the two thousand and fourteen municipal budget known as chapter one fifty-nine of the Township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash eighty-seven. And again, this money was not notified or received prior to the adoption of the budget. The Clean Communities Grant Program in the amount of sixty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars and ninety-four cents.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number eleven, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy-one, authorizing a special item of revenue in the two thousand and fourteen budget for the Alcohol Education, Rehabilitation, and Enforcement Grant Fund.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the two thousand and fourteen budget known as chapter one fifty-nine of the Township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash eighty-seven. And again, this is for the Alcohol Education Rehabilitation and Enforcement Fund. The amount we're receiving is six thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-five cents.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number twelve, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy-two, certifying the length of service award participants for two thousand and thirteen.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the two thousand and fourteen budget known as chapter one fifty-nine of the Township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon four dash eighty-seven. And again, this is for the Alcohol Education Rehabilitation and Enforcement Fund. The amount we're receiving is six thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-five cents.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number twelve, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy-two, certifying the length of service award participants for two thousand and thirteen.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, certifying the list of volunteer firefighters and emergency service squad members who have qualified for the length of service award program benefits known as LOSAP for the two thousand and thirteen year. This is those qualifying members from our emergency service squads that have met the minimum standard requirements by qualifying points for various different drills, calls, services that they provide to their volunteer squads. Each one will have an account set up at Lincoln Financial in the amount of eleven hundred and fifty dollars, and it does run cumulatively based on the number of years that we've started the program, which was two thousand and four for each year that they've qualified.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number fifteen, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy-five, authorizing the placement of a lien on block eight twenty-two, lot five, for property maintenance.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at ten twelve Laurel Boulevard, and authorizing the placement of a liens against said property for said costs. This is for property maintenance. The total amount of lien is one hundred and one dollars and ten cents.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number sixteen, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy-six, authorizing the placement of a lien on block twelve twenty-five, lot eleven, for property maintenance.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at fifteen fifteen D Road, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs. This total amount of this cleanup was two hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-four cents.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number nineteen, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy-six, authorizing the placement of a lien on block twelve twenty-five, lot eleven, for property maintenance.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at fifteen fifteen D Road, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs. This total amount of this cleanup was two hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-four cents.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number eighteen, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy-eight, canceling tax credit balances under ten dollars.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, canceling certain tax credit balances under ten dollars. Most of these are one cent that we're canceling.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number fourteen, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy-four, fixing the cost for the in-lu tax sale mailings.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, fixing the cost for the in-lu tax sale mailings at twenty-five dollars per mailing for the tax sale notice for each particular property in an amount not to exceed twenty, seventy-five dollars for any particular property in accordance with the Electronic Sale Pilot Program.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number fifteen, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy-five, authorizing the placement of a lien on block eight twenty-two, lot five, for property maintenance.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at ten twelve Laurel Boulevard, and authorizing the placement of a liens against said property for said costs. This is for property maintenance. The total amount of lien is one hundred and one dollars and ten cents.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number fifteen, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy-five, authorizing the placement of a lien on block eight twenty-two, lot five, for property maintenance.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at ten twelve Laurel Boulevard, and authorizing the placement of a liens against said property for said costs. This is for property maintenance. The total amount of lien is one hundred and one dollars and ten cents.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number sixteen, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy-six, authorizing the placement of a lien on block twelve twenty-five, lot eleven, for property maintenance.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at fifteen fifteen D Road, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs. This total amount of this cleanup was two hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-four cents.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number sixteen, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy-six, authorizing the placement of a lien on block twelve twenty-five, lot eleven, for property maintenance.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at fifteen fifteen D Road, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs. This total amount of this cleanup was two hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-four cents.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number seventeen, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy-seven, authorizing the premium payment on block eight forty-six, lot eleven, to be turned over to township in accordance with the statute.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, authorizing the premium payment of five thousand four hundred dollars on tax lien certificate twenty-ten zero-one three zero on block eight forty-six, lot eleven, to be turned over to the Township Treasurer to become part of the funds of the municipality in accordance with the provisions of NJSA fifty-four colon five dash thirty-three.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number eighteen, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy-eight, canceling tax credit balances under ten dollars.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, canceling certain tax credit balances under ten dollars. Most of these are one cent that we're canceling.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number eighteen, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy-eight, canceling tax credit balances under ten dollars.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, canceling certain tax credit balances under ten dollars. Most of these are one cent that we're canceling.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number nineteen, resolution two thousand and fourteen one seventy-nine, authorizing the transfer of credit balances from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fourteen.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, authorizing the tax collectors to transfer credit balances from the year twenty thirteen to the year twenty fourteen.
Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number twenty, resolution two thousand and fourteen one eighty, authorizing tax disbanding electronic tax sale pilot program.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, authorizing the tax collectors to participate in the pilot program for an electronic tax sale. We are going online with our tax sale gentlemen. So we are hitting the new wave and we're running a pilot with the Division of Local Government Services in accordance with their rules and regulations, and it will no longer be here. Usually the last Friday in January, the first Friday in February, it will now be all online, just like eBay.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Most?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Item number twenty-one, resolution two thousand and fourteen one eighty-one, authorizing refund of deposit money.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Boche State, and New Jersey, authorizing the release
It's at seven three two, three four one, nine seven zero zero, extension seven two eight one to register. Again, it is free and it's encouraged. So it's a good thing for the community. And where will they be?
It's Brat Community Hall, which is the corner of Lacy Road and Route nine, one oh one North Main Street.
I thank you so much. I also would like to mention in that regard, Mayor Quinn touched on just a couple of moments ago about the Methodist Church. Pastor Linda Applegate over there does great work and I promised her that I would mention something that is also on our website. When I say ours, the county health department website, ochd.org. She does something called Sophia, Support of Families in Addiction. And I reached out to several colleagues that I've had around the county, as well as colleagues of mine reaching out as well. And what we're able to bring over here now is, at the Lacy United Methodist Church, the first and third Tuesday of each month from six thirty to seven thirty, we have licensed counselors over there free of charge. I've attended one of those meetings. These counselors are there and normally they cost a few dollars. Here they're free. If you have any questions, if you have anybody struggling with any type of addiction, if you have, we have counselors over there for children. I recommend that you go. It's a service that we bring to the people of Lacy Township at no charge. In closing, my comments this evening, I had the honor of going to the Marine State Police Barracks this past July third, right before the holiday. It was about ninety-four degrees. We were there with Governor Christie. He signed a twenty-seven, twenty-five into law. And so, and this, what this does is it enhances the penalty for leaving the scenes of a boating accident. Now, there are a lot of proud boaters in Lacy Township. I think the water, the state police were there in the background, the Marine State Police. It was supported and written up by some of our local legislators here, Senator Holes Apple, namely. So I think credit is due to a lot of people and I think it's going to save lives. And what spurred it on was a tragedy that took place in two thousand eight on the Matitakonk River. So as a result of that, you know, we have good legislation now. And that law will mirror, talks about serious bodily injury. I'm not going to go into the whole law, but that law will mirror now what's on the road if you leave the scene of an accident. So I applaud the governor and our local legislators for that. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kenneth.
Yeah, I too also would like to thank Exelon for funding our annual fireworks display. I'd also like to thank the, all the emergency personnel and township employees for making the fireworks display success, especially in light of the fact that they had to change the day and readjust their schedules.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Most.
I too like to thank Exelon and also James Wieland and Casey Parker for putting that event together. They did a great job. The fireworks were very successful. I heard a lot of positive feedback with it and I enjoyed it myself. I'd also like to congratulate the new officers. We have great leadership in the Lacy Police Department and I wish them the best in their, in their career. I also attended, the mayor was out of town. He was traveling and he asked me to go to graduation for, at the Fire Academy, which is located in Ware Town. There were actually fifty-six graduates that graduated out of that academy that are now firemen that are from all our local towns. We actually had five graduate from Lacy Township. And it's amazing the amount of hours that they have to put in there. It's like a hundred and eighty hours of classroom and they have to get a seventy or better on the test. And actually, some people fail out of the program. But the chief of the Forker River Fire Company was very happy because they had one student, Robert Riggs, who actually received the Eugene Chief Furry Award. And that was for his outstanding academic achievement and practical excellence. So there was only three awards given out of fifty-six graduates and Robert Riggs received that top of his class. So also, who graduated out of that class from Bamber Lake was Clark Brash from Bamber, John Chanick from Lenoka Harbor, Christine Morello from Lenoka Harbor, and Daniel McKenna from Lenoka Harbor, and again, Robert Riggs. So I want to congratulate those graduates. And I told them on behalf of our committee that we're very proud of them and we appreciate their time, like all our volunteers. That's all I have to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Most.
Oh, I'm sorry, before I cut you off, since we're only having one meeting in August, correct, in the beginning?
Correct.
Yes.
I'd just like to ask everybody on their calendar, we have our five K race, which supports our municipal alliance, August twenty-third, and thank all our sponsorships. And Applebee's also helps sponsor the event by cooking for us. And, you know, every year we get an increase in participation and it's a great event and we have great parks and I'm looking forward to it. So I feel a challenge coming on from the Police Department. I think we heard that from the lieutenant, didn't we?
I think you did say that, yeah.
Yeah.
There's kind of an ongoing bet up here between the committee members on you versus the Police Department. Steve started it.
Well, since we have younger committees on here, I'm kind of hoping that they fill my shoes and start running in these events and...
I know he's not talking to me and Mark, so...
No, Gary, talk to the mayor.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Just following up what Dave said, to congratulate the individuals that went through the Fire Academy. It's such a major component of this town, the volunteers we have, whether it be in our fire departments or in our emergency squads or Police Department. But those individuals, you know, are true volunteers. They dedicate their time. They go to school and ultimately, you know, get to the status where they are, working on the trucks on behalf of the residents. So, Dave, I appreciate you going to that. I was at town with my wife and we certainly wanted to make sure we had somebody there to honor those individuals. So, thank you very much for that. Again, like my fellow committee members said, thank you to Exelon, you know, he made some comments earlier, and our new candidates for the Police Department, you know, certainly everyone that watches this, this, you know, tape on TV is going to realize, you know, the outstanding credentials that these, these men have. As Deputy Mayor Dyckoff had said before, we really are very, very fortunate to have the individuals joining the department that we hired tonight. So. Two other things, I have an announcement that we're going to be having, since we're not having a second meeting this month, I want people to understand that we are having Lacy Day again this year. It's going to be held on August ninth over at the Gilly Park. Rotary is going to be involved again this year and the organizations that have always been out there supporting us. It's going to be a great community event. Again, it'll start at twelve o'clock noon. It'll run until five o'clock in the afternoon. So hopefully it won't be a hot, humid day and it'll really turn out to be a great event, just as the fireworks were. Okay, I have some abbreviated police stats tonight. This is for statistics for the period from June first through June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. Lacy Township Police Department, I'm sorry, January first through June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. Lacy Township Police Department has handled twenty-five thousand four hundred ninety-three calls for service during the first six months of two thousand fourteen. We've had four thousand seven hundred and eighty-six motor vehicle stops, resulting in fifteen hundred ninety-nine summonses and seven hundred ninety-two written warnings. We've had four hundred and six motor vehicle accidents, one thousand ten first aid calls, sixty-seven DUI arrests, four hundred and twenty-six physical arrests, and a hundred and three drug possession arrests, with seven persons arrested for drug distribution. The chief wants to point out that the public is continuing to be a great source of information to assist the Police Department in our drug enforcement efforts. The Police Department has received hundreds of crime tips, which have provided valuable information to assist both ununiformed patrol officers and detectives. Residents are encouraged to continue to utilize the anonymous crime tip section of lacypd.org website to provide anonymous yet very detailed information. The website address is www.lacypd.org. Another problem we're having, illegal fireworks, continue to be a concern, as we've had many residents call and complain about the dangers of illegal fireworks being used in different neighborhoods. To maintain the safety and peace of the community, the Lacy Township Police Department will continue to strictly enforce the state laws related to illegal fireworks. Anyone found to be in possession of fireworks or involved in the discharge of fireworks will be charged with the state law and will be required to appear in municipal court. I know over the weekend, we had a tremendous amount of calls from people. We get a lot of this on the waterfront communities during this time of year. We, you know, I know the chief and the officers got out to as many as they could, but we're going to have more ability to get out to people now that the Fourth of July weekend is over with the people to come down and do these things on weekends. And we will enforce it and we will issue summonses and bring these folks into court. So it's something that, I know a lot of people think it's a lot of fun, but unfortunately you can have a tremendous tragedy occur from it. So we have to be very careful. Last, I just want to make an announcement that starting tomorrow, July eleventh, on down at Community Hall parking lot, we're starting our farmer's market again this year. The hours for the market this year are going to run from eleven AM to four PM. So they're going to be set up a little bit earlier to allow people to get into the farm, you know, farmer's market during their lunch hour. It's been cut back to four PM. It used to be five, but we didn't get a real tremendous amount of people during those late hours. So we're trying this this year. I want to thank John Camari and Craig Tomallo. You know, they're the ones who are running it for us for the last couple of years. And I met with John, I guess, two or three weeks ago and went over the details and he's all set, ready to get going. And it should be a good year. You know, should, I know we, my wife and I have bought produce at some of the markets around and it's been very good this year. And nicely, Tom, I truly want to thank you. I know you had another commitment tonight and it overran a little bit, but you know, we appreciate you. We couldn't have done this meeting without you. So we thank you for, you know, coming over here and we'll wait for you anytime. Having said that, I'll open the floor to public comment. Fred? Let me get Fred for you.
Fred Beglinger, Beach Boulevard, Forker River.
I need to sit down. That's all right.
Sure.
I've been hoping that all over town, mainly because my doctor keeps telling me, your legs are your second heart and get as much exercise as you can. It's going to help you. When it gets too painful, then I stop. They, I have noticed that on the buses that I take daily, because I cannot cook in my house. It's too dirty. The holes are still in the roof and the flies still come in. And I end up, if I cook something, I end up looking like one of the poor little children got kind of flies crawling on my face, which is no way to live. But that, I'm going to hopefully take care of soon. I go down to Wawa and I circulate and talk with the kids down there. And I also look at the cars and try to find cars that have too many people in them. And when the cars leave, I look at what they leave on the pavement. And I have given the police some evidence, hypodermic pain recently. So I'm doing my bit to try to help the Police Department. And what I'm noticing is that the children that are on drugs and taking drugs are getting more bold. A boy who looked like he was possibly thirteen at the oldest walked up to me and he says to me, "Are you a policeman?" And I said, "That's none of your business." And he said, well, he said, "What are you always walking around here looking in the cars for?" I said, "Because it's a freedom I have. I don't walk anywhere in Lacy and look at cars or people at cars if I think they're doing something wrong or report them." And he said, he suddenly said, "So help me God. If I knew you were a policeman, I'd go home and get my gun and come back and kill you right now." That plus two death threats, which I talked about, the mailbox, which I, I said to myself, "Well, that was the first time I got a death threat." So I said, "This is stupid. If somebody wants to kill you, they're not going to send you a letter or a warning to let you know." So that's why I just tore them up and threw them away. Maybe I shouldn't have because a Verru Dodge pickup truck, the big, the big one, real big, tall one. When I pressed the light down at the end of Beach Boulevard to cross over into the...
Business Park.
The park, yeah. The Business Park. I got a thing to go, a green to go and the signal with the hand or something. I forget what it was exactly, because I, my mind went blank. The guy with this big truck stepped on the gas and came at me as fast as he could. So I think that the drug-using and drug-dealing scum in this town are serious about getting rid of me. So I'm being a little more careful.
Let's start.
On, violence is escalating in the town is the point I'm getting at. Even though we're making a lot of arrests, arrests, there's still an escalation of violence. As I mentioned, I think of us every day because I can't leave home. Now, on the bus, two days before Fourth of July, there was a terrible argument with a lot of cursing, a lot of terrible language. The following day, there was another fight on the bus. And the kid was, there was, there was a young man running down the aisle and he was holding his hand. There was blood coming out of his hand. And I stood up and I grabbed him and I threw him in my seat and I sat down next to him. And I said, "Just stay right there until the driver stops the bus." I says, "And I'll take this cane." And I said, "I'm going to hit the person who's, who you're afraid of. And, and they'll never know what happened to them, because they'll just laugh right at me the way I know they do." This is why I mention to you, for the safety of every one of you and all of our policemen, that we actually start a program to protect ourselves. And one way you can protect yourself is that these terrible incidents that keep happening, that we can't believe, the shock, somebody did this, somebody did that. And it's not, it's not all done in our town, but it's done all over the country. And we read about it and see it on the TV at night and we can't believe that nice places have people that do such horrible things. What I say to you is that you should protect yourselves, the people who come here to talk against the use of drugs, so that they don't have to worry about something happening to them. And one policeman at the door with a lawn, and only one entrance into this courtroom, would be a good idea for protecting the judge, even, even though I don't like the judge. He still doesn't deserve, you know, what, what people have been saying to me. So let's, let's try to keep this courtroom safe and let the people know it's a safe place to come and they don't have to worry about some lunatic running in here with a, with a homemade gun or, or a small rifle and just start shooting at random around the room, which is horrible. So you, I hope we'll look into that.
Yeah.
With the chief.
Yeah, we, actually, we, I think it was the last meeting, we did have a police officer in the room. Tonight with the swearing in, we didn't have one here.
We had plenty.
We used to have that. And we had a police officer here at every meeting. And I think as we get further into the year, we're going to be discussing putting that back into motion again, now that we, we have more staffing available, you know, so we can pull one of the specials out. But, yeah, you're a hundred percent right, because, you know, we want people to be able to be safe when they come in.
Feel free and not scared. They can come, come here and, and feel free to say what they saw and they're not going to have to worry about getting shot.
Right.
Did, Caffrey's, I have to get back to you about what I had said at the meeting.
Which one? Which issue?
Caffrey's, where the kids were coming over to Caffrey's and getting beer and cigarettes.
With the underage kids?
Yeah.
Yeah. I spoke to Joe at Caffrey's and they're aware of it and they're, they're aware that bouncers were going to be trained in order to make sure that there was no underage, you know, taking place in there, yeah.
Because I wasn't trying to put Caffrey's down.
Oh, no, yes, yeah, it's not, yeah.
This was for their, so they didn't lose their license from the ABC.
Yeah, yeah.
There was one other point I think that was important that I might, oh, I'll, I'll end the discussion because these other people want to talk. I think, I think Chris Christie, Governor Christie is going to redeem himself, because he said that he was not yelling at his staff to close the bridge. He was hollering for them to close the bridge.
Thank you, Fred.
You're welcome.
You don't need to pink it back there.
My name's Janet Donnelly. I live at eight oh three Anchor Drive, Row of Sunrise. I have complained a few times to Mr. Downing. I've spoken with Mr. Most. The house across the street from me, eight thirty-eight Anchor Drive, is in a state of disrepair. There's junk in the yard. There's rodents that my cat is bringing home that are in, around the area. And the vegetation is so overgrown now that you can't see all of the garbage in the yard. But it does obstruct your vision when you're looking down Sunrise to try to pull out. And I don't know what can be done about it. I keep complaining. I've seen Mr. Downing over there taking pictures, but I never see anything happening.
Is the house occupied or is it foreclosure?
No, it's not in foreclosure, but she doesn't really live there. She's there maybe...
There's a process with regards to property maintenance issues, you know, we, you know, we can validate the complaint. That's not the issue. That's what goes out. And then there's a timeframe that has to go out and another notice that has to go out before the town can go and cross those boundaries and go in and do the cleanup.
Well, this has been going, I've been living there three years.
Okay, but again, and beauty is, beauty is different in the eyes of each beholder. I don't know the property in question that you're talking about, but, you know, there's a fine line between what I and you may think is a violation of property maintenance code and what actually is. So that's definitely something that the mayor or myself can talk to Mr. Downing about to find out what is going on with that property and what's happening. Because, you know, there, we're, our hands are tied in a lot of instances. Our attorney's been looking into an instance again with regards to a property maintenance issue. And our hands are tied in a lot of what we can do and what we can remove from those properties.
But what about the safety issue with the vegetation that is obstructing vision?
That, those things can be looked into, yes.
Which is on the setback that I guess...
That can definitely be looked into. If it's over twenty-four inches, it definitely is something. It has to be over twenty-four inches to be a violation.
You're talking about there?
How about over six feet?
Yeah. No, because you're talking about a side triangle there where a car pulls up.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, that, those are things.
And it's blocked. You can't even see the school bus coming down the street. I almost pulled out in front of a large pickup truck, not, kind of a dump truck.
Right.
And that was eight thirty-eight Anchor, right?
Eight thirty-eight Anchor Drive, yes.
It's on the corner of Anchor and Sunrise.
Why don't you, I'll, I'll see John tomorrow morning. Why don't you just leave us a phone number before you leave?
Not yet. Don't say it over the air.
Okay, but, no, Mr., I have spoken with Mr. Downing when he's been over there, because I've come out and pointed out things. He's taken pictures and she comes down and there's nothing done.
Yeah, I can find out where it's at and in the process, if a summons has been issued, if he's scheduled to be, whoever owns the house scheduled to be in court, has been in court. We had a similar situation in court last week where the woman just ignored it and the judge literally told her, "You either, you have ten days or you're going to be locked up."
There is a car also in the driveway, which they did take it out on a flat bed, clean it up and bring it back, but she's using it like as a storage...
You're allowed to have one unregistered, unrepaired, dismantled car in your yard? Yes, you are. That is the code and that is state code, not even local code.
Yeah. We've tried to change that. We have situations around town where we have people doing work constantly on their entire front lawn. I mean, Lauren has gone and investigated many, many items for us, because our property maintenance thing has to be updated. There's no doubt about it. But we can only do what we have the legal ability to do, or we're going to be challenged on it. And then, you know, taxpayer money is just being wasted sending her to court.
Okay.
But yeah, just leave us a phone number before you leave and, you know, I'll, I'll talk to John tomorrow.
My phone number to you?
If you, you know what, why don't you come up and just...
Just write it down, yeah.
This is, extra notes I have. Just write it down for me. I don't want you to say it over the air.
Unregistered, dismantled, high and drunk.
And the mayor will call you back. I like to put down Connolly, Donnelly.
Yeah, I've spoken with Mr. Most already before.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just the name and address, John?
Jack Nasty. I'm here tonight as president of the Sunrise Beach Club. I live at eight thirty-eight Forker Drive. Over the last year to more than a year, obviously, the issues of property maintenance have come up at our local meetings every time we have a meeting. And, you know, we promised the members that we would come to the township and discuss it. I see in your resolutions tonight, resolutions twelve and thirteen pertain to property...
Maintenance.
On my little old page, fifteen and sixteen were property maintenance code. So probably these were properties that potentially were in abandon or foreclosure that got so bad that...
No, no, there are people living in one of them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. They get the town to come in after X amount of days, mow the grass, basically, because they refuse to do it.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's...
One is an abandoned house, yes.
I mean, basically, in our area, the biggest problem we have are the abandoned homes or, you know, homes being closed on, which appear to be abandoned. So is there something we can do to help the process?
The problem being with a lot of this with the banks nowadays, and I just was on Congressman, on the phone with Congressman Runyon's office today, because they got a complaint that we do nothing about property maintenance issues in this town. And that is such a far cry from the truth. The banks aren't putting those houses into their names. So the only recourse I have is to go after the homeowner, who of course has abandoned the house, has no boarding address, and they still are at one, two, three Main Street. So after it goes through the process and the days, yes, the town goes in and does the minimum standard to clean up the property. That's all we're required to do. We place the lien on. Eventually, yes, the mortgage companies do pay for it. And we just had a house after, I think it was ten or eleven years, finally get transferred over into the bank's name, because now they already have it in the process of being short-saled out. So now it's worth it to them to do it. The banks will tell you they're not in the, in the business of having property maintenance. Sometimes some of the banks are very cooperative with us, because we can find out who the bank is. But they don't have to be, because they're not the owner. But sometimes they do, are concerned about their invested interest, more or less, you know. But they don't have the crews and the staffs to go in there and clean up the properties and that's their problem. But that's where it runs into a lot, is that the banks aren't flipping these houses into their names. So they're still in the old owner's names and they don't have an obligation to take care of them.
Okay.
That's where we're running into a loophole.
But in this situation, that, you know, you're still, there's someone living there.
Well, yeah, I mean, this is a unique situation.
Yeah, yeah, gives us...
Because it happens to be a bus stop, you know, for the grammar school kids. I think, you know, we just talked about it. Thinking about it, I think the side triangle is in trouble there. How far back is the side triangle?
It's usually fifteen.
Oh, fifteen? That might not be. But, but that would be the first thing I'd look at, because it looks like a lot of the growth, and you say, to each their own. But I think the fifteen feet might be in trouble on that property. And it would, you know, be good for all of us, especially our grandchildren and children that are on that bus stop, to try to at least address that issue, especially now, one school is not open. Be a good time to get a cleanup.
I mean, gen, I'm sorry, generally speaking, when it comes to just grass brush, things like that, it's very, that's easy for the town in the sense that, you know, they just go through the court process. And when it, when you're dealing with garbage and things of that nature, that makes it a little more difficult for the town to be able to pursue.
It shrubs.
It's on trees, yeah.
It's actually weeds that's grown into trees and bushes and shrubs, yeah.
Very well could be.
Yeah, usually that's what it is, yeah.
Okay, property maintenance. So if people, I mean, if they see properties in disrepair, just call Code Force and make sure they're aware of it.
Yeah, and he'll go out and, as you've seen him out there taking pictures, he goes out there and he does investigate it. And then, you know, letters are sent out if there's violations. And from there, follow-up is done. He spends a lot of Tuesdays hearing court against people and summonses and fines are issued.
When, when, when the banks finally foreclose and it goes to Short CL or wherever, does the town ever get their back taxes on the property?
All that has to be cleaned up at closing. Even the liens that we put on there if we go in and do the property maintenance, yeah. We get it all back.
Oh, good. Talking about the automobile repair, I mean, this is another big gripe in our area, because there's a home on Sunrise Boulevard that is constantly, constantly tearing the automobile apart. Now, the fellow says he's doing it for his immediate family. He's been doing it for his immediate family for five or six years now, every weekend. You can't have that much immediate family. There has to be, can we pass laws that you can, and this is not one car... immediate family for five or six years now, every weekend, you can't have that much immediate family. There has to be, or can we pass laws that you, and this is not one car, this is multiple of cars, they have, he has two Volkswagen sitting on his front lawn now, uh, that are covered, so I guess maybe he can't, they're hiding, you know what I mean? Um, that are probably disassembled or unregistered, uh, but then all of the other cars can, can, I mean, obviously, if we don't have the laws, we can't enforce them, are we doing something to try to get laws?
We're looking into a bunch of different, um, areas that can be pursued, because this has been a problem that has been discussed before, that, the problem is there, other towns have put some, you know, ordinances on the books where it would, um, limit a certain number of cars you could have at the premises, cars that are not functioning, um, and they didn't stand up, uh, you know, they were challenged on various grounds, so...
So effectively, you could, you could operate an automobile repair shop in a residential neighborhood, and, you know...
The answer to that is, no, you can't. But the thing is, and I, and I know you've been told this before, is we've gotta have proof he's really doing it, we have to have a passing of an invoice, an exchange of money.
No, 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 I disagree, I disagree, you don't have to get paid for it.
Well, that, and then, then, then...
I disagree, you're, whether you're, whether you're getting paid for it or not, you're actively conducting an automobile repair shop, now, say you're getting paid for it, uh-uh, I don't care if you get paid for it or not, you can't, I mean, you're in a residential neighborhood, how can you, you know, dismantle on a regular basis that many cars?
Well, the thing is, is what Ms. Lowry was trying to explain is that it, it, you, somebody can make the argument that if they're not making any money off of it, then they're just doing it...
It's a hobby.
As a hobby, exactly, they're doing it on their own, they're getting these cars, they're, you know, fixing them up, and they're not selling them, they're giving them away, or whatever it is.
Well, they're, they're doing it for their friends.
Correct. If we can show that they are making money off of it, then you've got basically, I don't wanna say slam dunk, but you can show that they are profiting off it, therefore they're operating an occupation out of their home that's unauthorized. It, it's one of those things that it's, it's not, it's not so simple. Uh, you do need to find, you know, we do need to find evidence to be able to bring them to court and to allow us to, um, make a legitimate claim. Uh, if we don't have any, if we don't have any evidence of that, then the judge is gonna be lenient, essentially.
Well, one of the questions is, if I, if I could interject, one of the, the questions I would have is from an environmental standpoint, you got, you got oil, antifreeze, refrigerant, I mean, where, where are they doing?
That's a different issue, though.
But, but, yeah, we don't have any proof of that, and, and again, if you pass a law saying you, you can't change your oil in, in your own yard, you personally, like, you'd have to almost make it too broad to the fact where you couldn't even do it yourself, "I can't go out there and change my own oil."
These are allegations of several vehicles.
Yeah, but there's no, again, that we don't have any, any evidence to prove that, that they're running a business, we, there was one over in Forkett River, we had evidence, we had exchange of invoices, we had appointments that were set up, they were stopped, they were in a rental property, they were stopped.
All right. Just tell these people that they're disrupting the meeting.
And Jack's wife could keep it down?
You brought them with you.
And it broke my train of thought, I have nothing else I was gonna ask. Um, I guess that's it, I'll switch hats.
Okay.
I'll switch hats, I'm switching hats anyway. A couple meetings ago, um, my counterpart, the Democratic Republican Chairman, went up here and said about how, how he had a friend named, that was running for the congressional seat, I would not, now I can give a plug for, uh, I was talking the other day to Congressman Runyon, and he asked me to spread a word that we have a very good fellow, Tom McArthur, running for Congress, uh, to fill his seat, and was asking me, uh, to, uh, ask the public to join him and I in supporting Tom McArthur. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Mr. Most?
Okay, Bill Most, this is Can Dry Forkett River, uh, I just wanna do a little bit on what Mr. Nasty was just talking about.
Sure.
You have item sixteen here, you put a lien on lot twelve twenty-five, lot eleven. Just for your information up there, you cleaned up that lot on eight twenty-four twelve...
Yep.
Ten twenty-five and twelve, seven twenty-nine and thirteen, and now you're cleaning it up to the fourth time. Seems that the township has become his landscaping.
Landscaping.
Surely has.
Yep, at a bargain price.
Now, the next thing I wanna ask about is the, uh, you know, I wanna talk about the bills. The total bills were two million eight hundred seventy-two thousand five dollars and forty-four cents. Out of that, we sent one million four hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred fifty-six to our school system. That leaves the township ran one million four hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. We operated the township on less money than we sent to the schools. Now, we asked why, and I can give you these little figures, 'cause we give our schools sixty-two point seventy-two percent of our taxes, we give our counties twenty-one point ninety-eight percent of our taxes, and we give our town, which you just heard operates on a lot less than the school, we only get fifteen point three oh percent taxes from the town. So, uh, people out there that wanna go after political people, forget it, go after it at the county, they're the ones that are spending, uh, almost seven percent more of your taxes than the township. And again, look around and see what you get from the county, versus look around and see what you get from, from Lacy Township. That's all I have, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Mr. Most. Anyone else?
Seeing that motion to close the floor.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned.
Aye.
All in favor?[1799.41]